Good evening, everyone. We're going to get started. The hour of 6:30 PM having arrived, I will call to order this regular meeting of the planning board. This meeting is being broadcast live on the City of Keene YouTube channel. The video is also streamed streaming on the city's website and is posted by the on the website by the end of the next busy business day barring any technical difficulties. Anyone wishing to view a copy of the agenda and supporting materials will find it on the city website. To receive electronic copies of future agenda packets, please go to the homepage and subscribe to the city meetings email list. The public and other board members will be recognized to ask questions and make comments on the agenda item under discussion. After being recognized, all remarks are to be made through the chair. Will the staff please conduct the roll?
Harold Farrington.
Present.
Roberta Mastojavani. Mayor Jay Khan.
Present.
Counselor Mike Remy. Sarah Vazani.
Here.
Brian Clancy. Kenneth Cost.
Here.
Armando Rangel.
Here.
And for the alternates, Stefan Mayu.
Present.
Brandon Markelen. Tammy Adams. Michael Hafer.
Here.
Thank you. And Mr. Chair, there's space if you would like to invite the alternates to participate as voting members this evening.
Yeah, please, please make note that I would like to invite our two alternates to participate as voting members this evening. Thank you. First item on the agenda then is the minutes of the previous meeting from October 28th, At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the October 28th, 2024 meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting?
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions, comments, or changes to the minutes? As usual, I have a couple. So in line eight, which is essentially the attendance piece, should be noted that Counselor Remy was attending via remote. Line 109, discussing the Habitat for Humanity project. Line 109, the word "no" should be inserted in front of access to water and sewer. I think it's incorrect as it's currently written. And then finally, on line 786, the advise and consent project on Court Street, the total number of homes is 31.
What line is that, Mr. Chair?
That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and also we'll correct the minutes to note that the votes were done by roll call throughout the meeting. I think some of them say by roll call vote and some of them don't. I believe they were all done by roll call.
Okay. Thank you. Do I need another motion or we can just use that for the, I think we just go with that motion? So at this time, we'll vote all those in favor of approving the minutes as mended by my comments. Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Okay. Next up is, next up is final vote on conditional approvals. This is a standing agenda item, and as a matter of practice, the board will issue a final vote on all conditionally approved plans after all the conditions precedent have been met. This final vote will be the final approval, and we'll start the 30-day appeal clock. Are there any applications tonight that are ready for a final vote?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There are no applications that are ready for a final vote this evening.
Okay, great. Moving right along, we now will move on to our public hearings. The first item on the public hearings is PB-2024-15. It's a major site plan, Menadnock Conservancy, Zero Ashwhewlet Street. Applicant, the Menadnock Conservancy, on behalf of JRR Properties LLC, proposes to construct an approximately 6,215 square foot office building and make associated site improvements on the parcel at Zero Ashwhewlet Street, tax map plat number 567-001-000. The parcel is approximately 3.53 acres in size and is located in the Commerce District. Does staff have a recommendation for completeness of this application?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Evan Clements, Planner. The applicant has requested an exemption from submitting a traffic study, historic evaluation, screening analysis, architectural and visual appearance analysis, and other technical reports and analyses. After reviewing each exemption request, staff has determined that granting the request should have no bearing on the merits of this application and recommend that the board accept the application as complete.
Thank you, Mr. Clements. May I get a motion to accept the application as complete?
So moved.
Thank you. Mayor Khan, may I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Rangel. Any discussion of the completeness of the application? Okay. So we'll move to a vote. All those in favor of accepting the motion, the motion for completeness of this application? Any opposed? No. Motion is accepted as complete. At this point, I would invite the applicant to present.
This is the existing parcel at Zero Ashwhewlet Street. The river is on the west side of the property. Keene Housing Authority to the north, and to the south would be West Street. Currently, the property is a bowl shape. There's a catch basin in the center. This is the existing city storm drain that runs with an easement through the property. It's all lawn space. It used to be the overflow parking lot for, I believe, the Colony Mill. And about four years ago, we got an alteration of train permit to remove all of that asphalt. JRR Properties is proposing to donate a portion of the property to the Conservancy with the balance going to the city park. There's a proposed subdivision with the application is going to be going in, I believe, next month for that subdivision. Working with the former city engineer, current community, excuse me, the Department of Public Works Director, he came up with an excellent idea about doing two things, replacing the existing city storm drain that's in not great condition and doing flood storage compensation by removing this section of the storm drain, replacing it with an open channel. And this portion would be just replacing the pipe. Because this had a alteration of train permit four years ago, it's within the 10-year time period, even though we're doing less than 100,000 square feet, we need an alteration of train permit. The storm water will be treated via infiltration basin that runs around the perimeter of the property. And there's a smaller one over here that'll pick up just the little bit of runoff from this access road. It'll have municipal water and sewer. There will be landscaping buffer along this side of the parking lot as required because it's residential area. I guess, do you have any questions?
Yeah, thank you. Do board members have questions for the applicant? Mayor Khan?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The site looks really flat. And is the remainder of the site buildable?
Good point that I failed to mention. The 100-year floodplain elevation is here, this dash, bold dash line. This is needed to be elevated, so the portion that's going to be donated to the city could be also developed if they also raise it and get an alteration of train permit.
And if I continue?
Yeah, please.
What is, how is it being elevated?
With fill.
Fill brought into the site?
Ideally, we reuse what's being pulled out of this area for the storm drain, but some of that material is not going to be suitable. It's too fine, so it wouldn't be, you know, good structural material and have to be brought on site.
And will you be keeping track of how much excavation or removal, cubic yards is being removed? So that should there be the ability to build further on the site, it, there'd be a calculation of how much was taken out, how much was add, put back in, and how much storage remains?
Absolutely. This, this needs a floodplain development permit, so that is a part of this permitting process.
Good.
Can I answer the public's question that was brought up earlier?
Yeah, we'll get to that later.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you. Mr. Cost?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm just trying to figure it out from my own thinking. It's now all a flood zone, pretty much.
Most of it, yes.
Yeah. So right now, with the floods, the water just goes all over that new, that grass and that whole area today.
Yeah, and it eventually gets in the city storm drain, which is at the low point.
Yeah. So if we, but you're, we're raising the site up.
This portion.
So that won't flood.
Correct.
And so all that floodwater goes into that, that handles?
This has been designed so that it maintains the existing drainage from upstream, and that's the lower portion. Anything above the, that would be the flood storage comp.
Okay. So not really taking area away from water that's going to be flooding. It's, it's, we're dealing with that with the same amount of.
Balancing it.
But through this sort of structure that you're building?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Khan?
Just one more question there. There's a pathway from Ashwhewlet River Park that goes past that site, right?
Yep, right through here.
Thanks for pointing it out.
I think it shows up better on the existing conditions plan. I guess they only show a portion of it right along here.
Just stop because I don't, there'll be a parking lot for the employees?
The parking lot's right here.
Okay.
The building is this L shape.
And is it anticipated that that will flood or the, the drainage system will handle that?
The, the drainage system will handle that. And there's an emergency overflow here for the 50-year storm, so any overflow will get into the riparian swale and eventually into the city storm drain.
Thank you. Other questions? Okay. So we're going to stick to our normal routine. So we'll get to the public questions and comments shortly, but at this time, thank you. At this time, I would like to ask the staff to present their comments.
Good evening, Evan Clements, Planner. Purpose of this application is to construct an approximately 6,000 square foot, single-story office building with associated site improvements for the future headquarters of the Menadnock Conservancy. The proposed headquarters will provide office space for 25 occupants and include a community room. Majority of the subject parcel, as discussed, is located within the 100-year floodplain. Therefore, the project will require compensatory flood storage to offset the construction and site development of this project. Current owner of the property intends to subdivide the parcel at a future date, most likely the next planning board meeting, and donate approximately one acre in the northeastern corner of the parcel to the Menadnock Conservancy for this proposed development. The remainder of the parcel is intended to be donated to the City of Keene to provide additional green space connection along the Ashwhewlet River. A portion of the required compensatory flood storage will be located on the part of the parcel to be donated to the city. An agreement between the Menadnock Conservancy, the current owner, JRR Properties, and the city for floods, the flood storage structure is currently being negotiated. The project will be required to obtain an alteration of terrain permit from the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services, as well as a floodplain development permit through the city. In addition to the flood storage improvements, an existing city-owned storm drain that runs through the parcel will be replaced with a riparian drainage swale that will support both storm water and floodwater volume management. Let's start with the determination for regional impact. After reviewing the application, staff has made a preliminary evaluation that the proposed site plan does not appear to have the potential for regional impact as defined by RSA 3655. The board will need to make a final determination as to whether the proposal, if approved, could have the potential for regional impact. As discussed regarding drainage, the proposed storm water management system includes a mix of detention basins, grass swales, infiltration trenches, and emergency spillway that is directed towards the larger flood comp structure. The proposed spillway will, the applicant states in their narrative for their drainage report that the runoff will be managed on-site with no adverse impacts to downstream of butters. This standard has been met. In regards to sediment and erosion control, the applicant states in their narrative that the site is relatively flat, which reduces concerns related to erosion control. The application proposes the installation of erosion control measures such as silt fence on an as-needed basis. A stabilized construction entrance is also proposed and will be maintained with best management practices. All control measures will be repaired as needed. This standard has been met. For snow storage and removal, there are areas of the site near the park, the proposed parking area, that are suitable for snow storage, and any storm events that exceed that capacity, additional snow will be removed off-site as needed. That standard's met. Landscaping, the application is required to install one tree per 10 parking spaces in the parking area. The proposal includes five red maples, one multi-liter birch to meet that requirement. And then a rhododendron is proposed to be installed next to the power transformer that will be used to feed power to the, the building. And then the screening area between the parking area and the high-density zoning district to the north will include a mix of evergreens, ornamental shrubs, and natural local grasses. That condition has been met. In addition to landscaping screening that I just talked about, there's a dumpster area that's going to be enclosed with a seven-foot, six-inch-tall solid wood enclosure with an attached shed. Heat pumps that are proposed along the facade of the building will also be screened with a stockade fence, and that standard has been met. In regards to lighting, there's going to be seven pole-mounted parking area light fixtures and 11 canopy lights. The fixtures are going to be installed on 12-foot pole mounts, and there's also going to be six wall-mounted lights and 15 bollard lights. Everything has got a CRI, a color rendering index of greater than 70, which meets our standards, and a Kelvin temperature of approximately 3,000, which also meets the standard. The applicant is also proposing a reduced lighting plan for after-hours security needs that meets our standards, and so all of those standards have been met in regards to lighting. As the applicant stated, the proposal will include city water and sewer with a one-and-a-half-inch domestic water service and a four-inch diameter sewer service with no fire suppression line as it's not required for the proposed office building. That standard has been met. In regards to traffic and access management, the proposed use will not generate a significant increase in total vehicle trips per day. The previous use of the property was a three-and-a-half-acre overflow parking area for a shopping center, and the ITE trip generation manual estimates an additional 24 vehicle trips during weekday peak hours. The site design includes the installation for 25 parking spaces, two accessible parking spaces, and a 24-foot-wide drive aisle. Granite curbing is proposed as wheel stops along all parking spaces. Street access for the parking area will be located at the northeast corner of the property to the north of the proposed office building. The parking lot also includes a turnaround, and a truck turning plan was submitted to ensure that emergency vehicles have sufficient area to navigate the site. Pedestrian access is located off Ashwhewlet Street with concrete walkways connecting the site to the city sidewalk system. A bike rack is proposed to be installed by the front of the entrance to the office building, and there is also just noting an existing concrete apron, locate, apron, excuse me, located at the southeast corner of the property left over from the parking lot, and that is proposed to be remained. That'll end up being on, pull the portion of the property that's going to be donated to the city, so there may be a future utility in maintaining that for now. That standard appears to be met. As discussed, discussed previously, filling and excavation will happen throughout the development of this site, but considering that Ashwhewlet Street connects directly to West Street, which brings us right to the highway, a, an additional sort of traffic management plan for the, the yard trucks that are going to be bringing fill in and out is not necessary. So that standard appears to be met. So for surface waters and wetlands, the applicant states in their narrative that there will not be any work on the site that will impact the Ashwhewlet River. The proposed flood storage swale, swale, whoof, will require the removal of the existing 15-inch culvert that is part of the city's storm water management system in the air, the, the area, and that will be replaced with that riparian swale that we've discussed earlier. No impacts to surface waters or natural wetlands are proposed as part of this application. This standard is met. For hazardous and toxic materials, the applicant states that there are no known hazardous or toxic materials on-site, and the proposed use does not include the use of such. That standard has been met. Noise, there's no proposed noise footprint outside of a general office use. That standard has been met. And last, but certainly not least, architectural and visual appearance. The applicant states in their narrative that the proposed office building will mimic the Menadnock Conservancy's values. The submitted elevations propose a single-story office building with a standing seam metal roof with solar panels. The building facade will be sections of slate siding with accent sections of wood siding. The east elevation will face Ashwhewlet Street and depicts a mix of the three, excuse me, building facade materials, wood, slate, and metal. A wooden fence will also be located on this elevation to discrete those proposed heat pumps I talked about earlier from the public right-of-way. The board should consider the following standards as part of their review of the city's architectural and visual appearance. Section 2114-2 Visual Interest, A and B. A states, "Front facades and exterior walls shall be articulated to express an architectural identity to avoid a uniform appearance. An architectural detail shall give the impression of being integral to and compatible with the overall design." And B, "Structures shall have architectural features, such as dominant gable ends, cornices, granite sills, arched openings, large windows framed with architecturally consistent trim, et cetera, and patterns that provide visual interest at the pedestrian scale, reduce massive aesthetic effects, and harmonize with the city's distinctive architectural identity, unique character, and prevailing scale." So I do ask, as part of your deliberation on this application this evening, that we do discuss the proposed appearance of the building to see if it does in fact meet our standards. All I have left, Mr. Chairman, is the recommended motion. So prior to final approval and signature, owner's signature on the plan, five copies. Staff does ask that a, the AOT permit number be included as a note on those plans. Timing permitted. Sometimes DES takes a little bit longer than we prefer, and we don't want to hold up final approval for them if that's the only thing we're waiting for. So we'll work with the applicant if that becomes the case. Submittal of a security to cover the cost of sediment and erosion control, landscaping, and as-built plans in the form and amount acceptable to the city engineer. Subsequent to final approval, staff is asking that prior to the commencement of site work, a pre-construction meeting will be scheduled with the community development staff. Prior to the commencement of site work as well, those erosion control and sediment measures shall be inspected prior to the beginning of work. Following the installation of landscaping, the applicant shall contact community development staff to schedule an initial landscaping inspection. And then again, after one full growing season or a minimum of one year, the applicant shall contact community development staff to conduct a final landscaping inspection to ensure that all plants installed have been established and are thriving. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Clements. Board members have questions for staff? Counselor Remy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. That last condition, I don't remember that from a lot of our proposals. Is that relatively new that we're adding that condition that we have to go back a year?
The, the, adding the condition as part of the approval is relatively new. However, it is in our standards that's, it's common practice. We're just finding that sometimes it gets forgotten about, and this is just a way to help applicants remember that this is something that we need them to do.
Okay. Thank you. I have a question on signage. Do we know what that is, what it's going to look like?
The sign has not been proposed at this time. That's generally handed through a sign permit through the community development department, and that gets a zoning review and a, a building review.
Mr. Cost?
Thank you. I had a question on the lighting. I'm looking at the lighting plan, and it looks like there's no light leak to the houses that are right nearby, but I just wanted to kind of hear that and make sure that the residential units that aren't that far away from the parking lot aren't going to be impacted by lighting.
Yeah, I'd be happy to bring, to talk about that a little bit further. So yeah, all the lighting levels proposed are within tolerances for light trespass across onto private property and the public right-of-way. There is additional landscaping that is proposed to screen that parking area that was not included when that photometric plan was conducted, so I wouldn't be surprised if there's actually even a little bit less now. I would also like to note that on the adjacent property, there's another parking area, so it's going to be on the Menadnock Conservancy property. It'll be the parking area, their screening, a little bit of green space, another parking area, and then the residences.
Mr. Cost? Please continue.
So another question on the, the flood storage compensation facility. That's going to be on city property?
It's going to straddle both.
Eventually, when this is subdivided.
Correct.
Does the city then have to maintain that, or who maintains all of this drainage?
So that is, that is. So, that is, that is an ongoing agreement. It's a very good question. It is an ongoing agreement. The city attorney and the representative for the Menadnock Conservancy will come with an agreement, and ultimately, city council will decide what they're comfortable with. When this project comes back before the planning board for the subdivision, where staff is going to recommend seeing the results of that negotiation included with that application.
Counselor Remy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For clarity, as much as we know that there's been talks about subdividing, we're reviewing this application as the whole parcel. Is that fair to say?
That's correct, Counselor Remy. The application before you this evening is just the site plan for the office building.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Clomets.
You're welcome.
So, now is the time for the public to ask questions and provide comments. So, I'll invite anyone who would like to ask a question or make a comment to come forward, and please state your name and address and speak into a microphone.
Can you hear me okay?
It's for the person in the sky.
Yeah, we need it for the minute taker, for the mic to be on.
Yeah, there you go. Okay. Hi, I live at 93 Ashwhewlet Street. I think I said Ashwhewlet Street, right? I lived there for three years. My name's Dan Hagan. I live by myself. My wife passed away a few years ago, so I moved into the neighborhood because it was quiet. It's kind of like on a dead-end street, but what I'm concerned about is that because it's a busy street, because a lot of cars come off of Court Street and go down my street to School Street, you know, all that stuff, all day long. I don't know where you come up with it, there'd only be 20 more cars there. They're going to be doing construction out here in the city, and all that traffic's going to be detoured through my neighborhood with these other trucks digging holes and whatever they're doing, cutting down trees. And to me, that's kind of a lot of stress. I don't know if, it's, where is the building exactly on the lot? Is it way in the back or is it right in the front, the park lot, the lights, all that, you know? I want to go outside of my house at night, it's dark. I like that. I have a traumatic brain injury and noises and lights and all that set. It messes with me, so I'm very concerned over that. And, I mean, I think it's wonderful that you guys want to do something there with that land, but I think apartment buildings be more like it than putting a bunch of people because it's going to bring more traffic, you know? People go down there, I like to walk that park. All that traffic's going to be going there all the time, you know? It'd be nothing but trouble to me and bring all those different people into the neighborhood. My house has been broken into a couple of times already. I'm not saying that's going to happen, but I'm pretty much sure it's going to bring that type of people, and that's what I'm concerned about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, I am Beth Ann Barrett. I live at 27 Ashwhewlet Court, which is right there. I like that this is going to be the parking lot and that's going to be the building because that gives a little bit of separation. Question that I have, am I close enough here? I'm sorry, I spoke up before. Are they leaving the bank of trees that's right here during the construction and whatnot? Will that be remaining? Because we have a nice bank of tall trees. They cut some of them down on the, on the, this side dirt when they were making this the green space, which, all fine, but do you know if they'll be leaving the bank of trees on, on the fence line here? And will they be leaving the fence?
Yeah, please, go ahead.
So, the fence along the north side will be removed. If you look at the line type, that's a line with circles through it in the parking spaces, that is the fence. Yep.
Okay, so the rest of the green space that's going to be removed?
We will be removing the green space between that fence and the property line and replacing it. I can flip the sheet so you can see the landscaping.
Sure.
Proposed.
So, the RMs, those are red mingles proposed, and this outer circle, that's the proposed canopy at maturity.
Okay.
There's going to be the multi-liter birch over here to screen.
If I could just ask you to speak into the microphone, thanks, because we have someone taking notes.
There's a rhododendron proposed here, the multi-liter birch. These are ornamental grasses along the front. Inkberry holly are these darker symbols. So, this area between Ashwhewlet Court and the parking will be fully landscaped.
And the trees that are currently up here?
That's off our property, and we can't, we're not touching that.
Okay. And will, you said the fence will be coming out here or will be coming out from where it is currently?
Yep.
Moved up to here. Will that be all the way down?
I think I, I'm not clearly explaining that. So, this is the existing chain link fence?
Okay.
And that's being removed. There's not going to be a fence back, put back.
Okay. All right. So, then where, if that's current, the fence currently, then that's, that space that you're having with trees, that's where the parking lot that someone mentioned on Ashwhewlet Court, that's where the people that rent on that side, that's where they park currently. Well, maybe. How much distance would you say is between the fence and the trees and whatnot?
Looking at the scale, looking at the scale bar, about 20 feet between the fence and the property line.
Okay, so that, 20 feet, yikes.
Then again, I'm eyeballing it from the scale bar, but that's what it roughly looks like.
Okay. So, that won't necessarily affect me, except it will bring the road a lot narrower. Have they looked at, in the planning of this, how much that's going to impact Ashwhewlet Court? If it's 20 feet from there to here, is what you're saying, or 20 feet from here to here?
It looks roughly 20 feet from the, from the fence line to the property line. I'm going to flip to the existing conditions.
Yes. So, the current fence line, what you're saying is running roughly through here?
Yes.
Okay.
And the buildings are located, this is from LiDAR, so it's aerial view, and because Ashwhewlet Court was off, off of the scope of work, we didn't show it on this plan set. However, the proposed subdivision that hasn't been submitted yet, that plan does show it. So, here's the fence line and the scalloped line, that's the tree line currently.
Okay.
And the property line between the JR properties and the Ashwhewlet Court is right here.
Okay. Oh, there's my name, sorry. Okay. So, that does, based on what I'm seeing, that does cut in a bit to where the cars currently park for the Colson properties up here, just to make you guys aware. They currently park, there's one parking spot in front of the duplex, and then any other tenants park against the fence essentially, with about a five-foot buffer between their car and the fence. But it looks, by and large, I think that's a lovely-looking plan. I'm glad to see it going in, but I just had those few questions.
Chair, could I answer the previous question that you had?
Oh, how tall? I'm so sorry, I interrupted.
Single story.
Single story, okay.
Yeah, please.
Thank you. I think that's all I had for just questions and observations. Like I said, I'm glad to see it going in. Growing up, it was a parking lot. It was great during the winter because they'd put the overflow snow in there, and my sister and I loved it, but it, it was just a bare parking lot for a long time after that, so. All right, well, thank you.
I have one more question.
Thank you. Yep, please come forward.
Yes, sorry. Hi, my name's Dan Hagan. I just have one more question. Where exactly is the parking lot entrance going to be off of Ashwhewlet Street? Am I saying that name right?
Ashwhewlet?
Yeah, Ashwhewlet, okay, thank you, yeah. Because my house is like right here, so it's going to be across the street from me, pretty much?
It looks like right across from his driveway, yes.
I don't know, right? So, that means a lot of traffic is coming in and out of there, plus you get the road that goes into these houses, so there's going to be two roads there now. You know, there's parking lot here, the people that live in these houses pick here, then you get these, the apartments down at the end of the street. These are the houses across from me, right? Call it there, yeah. So, now there's going to be two, I don't know. So, what are you going to do? Put a light there now or something? How are you going to direct traffic there is what I like to know because this parking lot's going to be used for this building, but also when they're using this park and all these trails. So, that's where they're going to be parking now, right? Or is that, I'm not understanding that then, right? Is that a totally different thing? If I'm going to use this park over here, because there's really no parking, right? They're not going to park in there? How are you going to stop that?
The Conservancy, they're going to have their employees here, and people are not going to want to walk through the stormwater treatment and down through this water to get back up to get to the trail. They'll likely come in this entrance to access the trail that runs up.
Yeah, that's what they do now, right? That's what I was just wondering because, yeah, I'm just more concerned about right across the street. Where are those lights going to be? Are they going to be like every 15 feet or something, there's a big old light? These are the lights?
Yeah, and the tallest ones are 12 feet. And these are little, short bollard ones, and these are ball packs on the building.
On the building, okay. And these are 24-hour lights who are always going to be on?
No. They're, for the city regulations, after, I think, believe it's 10:00 PM, they have to be 50%, so there's going to be a lot less light.
Well, all right, here's another, because I was thinking, so they're going to dim out and brighten up, dim out like this all night long?
Not strobing, no.
No, okay. All right, so, I mean, I love the, yeah, I'd like to see something be done with this project, but I'm concerned about the traffic, really, is what I'm concerned about, really. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else from the public have a comment or question? Seeing nothing, I will close the public portion of this meeting. Thank you, and we will move on to deliberation. So, I will, at this time, entertain a motion. Counselor Remy? Mr. Cost?
Thank you. I have a motion to approve PB 2024-15, as shown on the plan set identified as Menadnock Conservancy Headquarters, prepared by SVE Associates at varying scales on October 18th, 2024, and last revised on November 12th, 2024, with the following conditions. One, prior to final approval and signature of the plans by the planning board chair, the following condition precedent shall be met. A owner's signature appears on the plan, submittal of five paper copies and a digital copy of the final plan with the AOT permit number included as a note on the site plan, and submittal of a security to cover the cost of sediment and erosion control, landscaping, and as-built plans in form and amount acceptable to the city engineer. And two, subsequent to final approval, the following conditions shall be met. Prior to the commencement of site work, a pre-construction meeting will be scheduled with, with community development staff. Prior to the commencement of site work, the erosion and sediment control measures shall be inspected by the community development department to ensure compliance with this application and all City of Keene regulations. C, following the installation of landscaping, the applicant shall contact community development staff to schedule an initial landscaping inspection. And D, after one full growing season, a minimum of one year, the applicant shall contact community development staff to conduct a final landscaping inspection.
Second. Thank you, Counselor Remy. All right, so we have, moving on to deliberation. Counselor Remy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with the statement around regional impact. I think as much as this is close to a body of water that does flow through many regions, it's not affecting that, as discussed before. I think the conversations around traffic, I do believe the 20, just because this lot is intended for employees only, it's not intended to be the parks piece, so I'm glad they clarified that, and that the park, hopefully, will continue to park in the Mascoma lot there. I think that's where most people park when they're going to the park. I live right around the corner, I guess up around the corner, so that's what I generally see. I don't see folks going in and out of there. But generally, I think it was a well-written proposal. I do think, as far as we need to talk about the design a little bit, I do think there is varying interest. I think it fits in well with the fact that it's in the middle of a field. I think it fits, it'll look good in there, and I think it'll be attractive for folks driving by it or visiting it.
Ms. Fasani?
So, I agree with the statement that it won't have an effect on regional impact. I do think that building on that particular fault plane actually makes sense in this instance, and the way that they're dealing with it really does make sense. I think they've done a good job of preparing for that. I think that there, I mean, as far as I understand, there's 25 people that are going to be there in a single story, so I don't think that traffic will be an issue in this particular phase of this project. I don't think that should be an issue at all. Looking at the design of it, it does mention the solar panels on it, and one of the conversations that we look at further on is that we have to make sure that those kind of blend in, that they're muted a bit, that they match the look of the roof and whatnot. So, that would be my only comment, is that we ensure that does happen, that it's not a glaring solar panel look on top of a different color sitting seam roof. So, as long as those conditions are met, I feel comfortable with this application.
Thank you. Mayor Khan?
I think the improvement on the site is going to be a welcome improvement. I think welcoming the Conservancy to a permanent location in the city is going to be an improvement. So, and I like the way that you've tried to treat the site. My only concern, and I think we can hold it for city council kinds of deliberations, are the extent to which the constraints will be placed on any gifted land to the city. But we can leave that for another day.
Counselor Remy?
Thank you, Chair. Just had one follow-up, and it may be just a note for the applicant to take note of, is if those cars are actually parking on their land on the north side of the lot, that they may need to have a conversation with the neighbors just to make sure that's cleared up as far as that. Not anything that's going to affect the application, but just something that they may want to consider if they're going to affect that land.
Yep, good point. Thank you. Mr. Cost?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not sure exactly who, it's just an idea to talk about, in that this is, you know, the Conservancy facility, and we have that flood storage compensation, and whether this is doable engineering-wise or not, I'm thinking there's a lost opportunity to maybe incorporate vegetation into some of this, these drainage structures, almost like a bio-retention swell with, you know, I don't know what it would be, the right kinds of vegetation and plants, creating a habitat that's sort of a, you know, a wet habitat to make it interesting, maybe educational, maybe signs. So, just something to think about as you...
So just something to think about as you move forward, if that's something doable. Because it would be a great, I think, a great asset to the park and very educational. So something to consider. But otherwise, it's, it all looks quite nice.
Mr. Heifer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In terms of the bits that specifically this staff asked us to comment on, the visual interest aspects, it's a nice design, a one-story building, I think will fit in well with that neighborhood and a variety of textures and treatments. I think it'll be a nice addition to the city and fit in with the character of our town.
Thank you. Yeah, and for my part, I really echo what the mayor said, which is, I think the Menadnok Conservancy is a great organization and fits in very nicely with the culture and the kind of attraction and charm of Keene. And to have their headquarters permanently here, I think is a feather in the cap for the city. So I think it's an excellent project as well. So having said that, let's, let's advance to the vote. So we have a motion and a second, so all those in favor? Any opposed? All right, proposal is approved. Thank you. Thank you. Just bear with us for one second. Last, last two members are there. Okay, all right. Yeah, it's a good idea. I'm good, thanks. I brought my own. That's okay. Yeah, we had, we didn't have a quorum, but yeah, we had a few. Okay, back at full strength, we will now proceed to the next, next agenda item under public hearings. So our next item is PB-2024-16, major site plan for Kia 440 Winchester Street. Applicant Hutter Construction Corp. on behalf of 434-440 Winchester LLC proposes to construct a new approximately fifteen thousand three hundred and sixty-five square foot Kia dealership in place of the existing approximately nine thousand nine hundred and fifty square foot building and make associated site modifications on the property at 440 Winchester Street. Tax map plat number 115-004-000. A surface water conditional use permit is requested for temporary impacts within the thirty-foot wetland buffer. Waivers are requested from Section 20.14.3. D and Section 21.7.3. C and 21.7.4. A.1 of the Land Development Code to allow for parking in front of the building and allow lighting, on the allowed lighting levels. The parcel is 2.23 acres in size and is located in the Commerce District. Okay. So, staff have recommendation for completeness of the application?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Megan Fortson, planner. The applicant has requested exemptions from submitting a traffic analysis, soil analysis, historic evaluation, and screening analysis. After reviewing each request, staff have made the preliminary determination that granting the requested exemptions would have no bearing on the merits of the application and recommends that the board accept the application as complete.
Thank you, Ms. Fortson. All right, so at this time, I'll, I'll ask for a motion for, on completeness of the application. Mayor, Mr. Mayes? Thank you, Mr. Maye. All right, any discussion of completeness? All right, so let's move to a vote. All those in favor of the completeness motion, please indicate. Thank you, any opposed? Motion is accepted as complete, or the proposal is accepted as complete. Okay, at this time, I will ask the applicant to present. It's all yours, Mr. Noonan.
Good evening. For the record, John Noonan, Fieldstone Land Consultants, here on behalf of the landowner, which is 434-440 Winchester LLC, and the applicant, Hutter Construction. So our overall plan is to take the existing Kia building, build a building to the rear of that, allowing the existing dealership to remain operational as long as possible. So on our existing conditions plan, we show here, parking spaces is roughly a hundred and fifty existing parking spaces, very few to the front and some to the side. So not all these parking spaces were striped parking spaces. This is based on account of number of cars they fit on the lot, so. Moving to our existing, or our proposed, the existing building would be demolished in the front, a new building built to the rear, and basically flipping, so we have parking to the front, closest to Winchester Street, which is here on the left of the page. Building of fifteen thousand three hundred and sixty-five square feet. So our waiver was for parking in the front, so we're formalizing parking along the sides. There's then a service bay area in the back with ramping up and down here and parking to the rear. So there's less parking in the proposed condition to the rear of the building than there is in the, in the existing condition. As highlighted here in the back, there is a jurisdictional wetland that runs along this back portion of the property. So from that, we have the thirty-foot buffer setback here. There's also drainage ditch that runs here. So this is a man-made ditch that ultimately takes the flow of drainage from the existing building here and the front parking lot and the, and the side parking lots, directs it to an outlet into the drainage ditch. That drainage ditch ultimately ties into the tax ditch that runs along Cromwell Drive and goes under Criff Road and then ultimately goes to the Ashwamp Brook. So the city had cleaned out that ditchway along Cromwell Drive probably two, three years ago. This ditch is basically on the private property, but attaches and flows into that same ditch line. So it was mentioned that there was a stormwater cop application for impacts to the buffer. That has since been taken out of the application. So with our initial, we had grading and we had some improvements within that thirty-foot buffer. We've pulled everything back, so our back parking, paved parking is exactly where the existing parking edge is now. And then the area within that buffer area would be lowered in elevation for flood compensation and lowman seeded. So everything is taken out of that, other than grading for storm, for flood compensation, which is allowed under the Land Development Code, and our erosion control measures. So we have silt fence as part of that temporary grading or temporary impacts within the buffer. With the improvements we have, so there's not a lot of landscaping in the existing condition. We're providing some landscaping up in the front. The, along the frontage, landscaping remains for here, but this area in the front, we're pulling the pavement back from the existing condition because there are plans in the works for expanding of Route 10 and Winchester Street here. So we've pulled everything that's proposed into the property line, so right here. The timeframe for when that happens, we haven't been given plans on that, but, but ultimately planning for that to come in the future. So we've pulled everything tighter into the site in the front and provided landscaping up here to, in case this becomes all paved or whatever the state determines on that side. Next was our grading, so as I mentioned, there's flood compensation. So this area is, as we know, most of the buildings in the area and properties here are in the hundred-year floodplain. So this is gonna require a permitting with FEMA and a city floodplain development permit. So we've reviewed this preliminarily with, with Mike Hagan. And ultimately, we're gonna be doing a total volume compensation for flood compensation. So the proposed building has to be one foot above that flood elevation. So our proposed floor elevation ends up being higher than the existing building. We flip based on the existing condition, where now we're gonna lower the front elevation and to the rear will be only about a foot lower than the existing elevations here to the rear. So we've provided flood compensation numbers on our plans. Those will be reviewed as part of the floodplain development permit. We've also discussed them with the city engineer and Mike Hagan on that. So we're providing just a little over a balance of what's needed for the flood compensation. So any fill that's placed in that flood elevation, we're providing a cut to offset that. Next, we provide a utility plan, one of the first phases. So there is a transformer that is located in the existing or in the proposed building. That existing transformer is gonna have to be relocated to the rear of the lot. So we're gonna move it to the rear of the lot. They're gonna have to feed the GMC dealership to the north, which is fed from that transformer, do a temporary service to the Kia dealership that will be demolished, and then a new service for the proposed building. And as in, as with the existing condition, we're gonna extend water and sewer. So these are municipal water and sewer services that are shown here. We submitted a lighting plan. So the existing lights, there's two that are, that fall out within this twenty-five-foot front easement line right-of-way area. So we've moved lights right up along the edge of the proposed parking lot here, some on the islands and in the center, and then pole, these are all pole-mounted lights and then building-mounted lights, and in the rear, two right at the edge of the parking lot, two pole-mounted lights. All fixtures are full cutoff and meeting the city standard. And then we've, we just listed how it's gonna reduce by fifty percent after business hours at ten PM and later. So as was pointed out in site walk today, the existing fixtures on the building and the parking lot, pole-mounted lights are non, they are not full cutoff. They're actually angled lights, so this will be a vast improvement over the existing condition. And as part of our waivers, we've requested is waivers for the lighting. So one is going over one-foot candle at the right-of-way. So we are coming right at the edge of pavement, right under the light. These are forward throw lights. However, we have just over one or about one-foot candle right here. If we had modeled the existing lights that are in that right-of-way, they're right in that, they're right-of-way, they're well over one-foot candle. So even though we're over the one-foot candle or right out at that, it's, it's an improvement over the existing. So we're actually making it more conformant than it is today. Our other waiver was for lighting going over this northern property line. So we have just over the zero-point-one-foot candle that's allowed. Again, there's gonna be building-mounted lights. This is gonna be an access aisle that's utilized by both dealerships to the north and to the proposed Kia dealership. It's the same owner, so we don't anticipate any issue with impacting the other, who's the same person. Landscaping, we're asking for an alternative review on landscaping plan, ultimately because the dealership does not want trees. So we've, we're asking for lower shrubs to be utilized. We've provided the landscaped islands and along the building here and here. Ultimately, they don't want the trees because of leaves falling on new car finishes and the attraction of birds. So there'll be more birds hanging around the new cars. So similar to other dealerships in the area and in Swansea is less trees near, near the display areas. We've provided erosion control and construction details, sewer and water connection details. And architecturally, the architect from Kia Corporate has provided these plans. They're about a ninety percent plan. As they go forward with the building permit process, they'll be submitting full architectural plans for all materials. Ultimately, we're looking at a very similar style to the GMC dealership directly north. So a black, this is aluminum, so in the architect's plan, he puts ACM, so that's an aluminum composite material. So a panel, a metal panel, black, large storefront glass, and then metal panel between the rear and the sides of the site. There is a parapet wall running from, so it's about eight inches high of a parapet, and then it gets higher towards the back because the roof, the roof is a slight pitch towards the rear of the building. So it's forty inches to the rear. And on the architectural plans, the rooftop units are set back thirty-six feet, twenty-three feet from the front and rear, and well over that from the north and south. So they have a left, side and left is thirty-six, and then twelve and twelve looking from the, the rear of the building. And phasing, this was discussed on the site walk today as well. So Hutter Construction put together a phasing plan for how traffic will be handled during the demolition and, and operation. So they're trying to operate as long as possible in the existing building. So they would enter for the existing building from the, the southern entrance. There is no curb cut to the building. They share curb cut with the northern and southern properties. So they would utilize phase one, the dealership is utilizing the south entrance. Construction is coming through the north entrance. They're gonna place a, a gate and fence from the existing GMC building to the proposed and also along the southern, north-south facing, putting a gate and construction fencing around. And then they would build the, the proposed building and parking lots. Once that is fully operational, moving the dealership operations into the building and flip-flopping. So then they would, they would come out the, for demolition and removal of pavement and reconstruction of the parking lot, would exit the south, and the dealership would utilize the north at that time. Overall, we, we've addressed, so Overall, we've addressed, so these plans were revised on November 11th. And that was to address staff comments from both the community development group and also with the department, Department of Public Works. So, city engineer had review comments. We addressed those. We recently had a letter submitted to us regarding the alteration of terrain and drainage. So, we've reached out to the city engineer between Friday and then discussing today with him as well that we meet the city standards for stormwater management and drainage. And we've reached out to alteration of terrain, so we're going to meet with the DES department. That's pending when they have a time to meet, so we reached out to them today. We're going to have a meeting to verify if it needs an alteration of terrain permit or not. Most of the comments in the letter were alteration terrain review comments. In our opinion, in our opinion, not applicable in that we don't see that we need a, an alteration of terrain permit. However, we're going to meet with DES and we've already reached out to them to have a meeting to review the plans. Pass that. I'd like to open up for questions, comments.
Thank you, Mr. Noonan. Questions from the board? Counselor Remy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There's just one that I have. There's a above-ground storage tank that looks like it's going to be in the middle of where your existing building is. So, I'm assuming it's getting removed and you're doing all the right things with that?
Yes. So, that tank sits, I should show on the existing conditions here, sits on the same island that the transformer is on. This is a skid tank, so it, it's for fuel. So, it's a self-contained tank. It has spill containment within it. They'll pick up that, that tank and they're going to move it to the Mitsubishi dealership site. So, the owner said that the Mitsubishi dealership tends to utilize it more. It can be used between all three dealerships, but they're going to move that. And also, I didn't mention too is the sheds and the containers that are out back will also be removed completely from, from the site. They're not being moved to another one of the properties. They'll be removed.
Awesome. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, two questions, follow-up on the gas tank. It's an above-ground gas tank?
Correct. Yeah. And it's a self-contained unit, so they can pick it up with a fork truck and move it. It's an above-ground storage tank.
It's not anchored in the ground in any manner?
No. It's, it sits on a concrete pad now, but they'll, they'll move it and place it. They were talking right behind, as close as they could to the building here.
The frame on which it sits is independent of the tank?
No. So, the bottom skid of the tank is self-supported, but it currently sits on a concrete pad. But, the concrete pad is not needed for the structural frame of the tank.
So, it does lift without any saw cut, any?
Correct. They said they would, they would take it, pick it up, and they'd move it over here and likely look to either do a pad or just set it close to the, on the pavement, close to the building where they use the garage area.
One other one.
Yeah, please.
You showed the color illustration of the, the couple of sites that abut the Kia dealership. Further back, when you flipped them all over.
Oh, from the architectural plan?
Yeah. Site plan. I guess it's architectural. Go ahead. Keep going. Yeah, that, I think that depicts it. So, one of the, my question has to do with the frontage along Winchester Street and the consistency of that frontage. So, here we've got a building moving back further on the lot, allows more cars to be visible. It's probably part of the purpose of, of, that the dealer has is to allow people to be observed and to also observe what's on the site. So, the site that's next door to the, to the north.
Yep.
Is, that's right up on the curb, right? Is that what I'm seeing? The white?
It's not quite on the curb, but there, there's a twenty-four-foot drive aisle that comes through here and they currently park cars all along the frontage here.
Yes.
Those existing parking spaces, it's going to be roughly five feet back from that existing edge of pavement of that parking lot in is where that right-of-way line is.
Right. Well, and, and so, but my question has to do with the consistency of the building setbacks. And so, this is establishing a different setback for the dealer's building. It begs the question, which is, which is the consistent approach and appearance for Winchester Street? Is it to try to encourage that dealership structures are to the front of the lot or to the rear of the lot? And that's, that's, architecturally, that's the question I'm asking you.
So, I think it's kind of a mix between, so the Mitsubishi dealership sits back and has more parking all in the front. This would then have parking in the front and some to the rear. And the GMC has a minimum amount in the front and then it's mostly all to the side and the rear. So, it is kind of a mix as you come back. This building, this is an older aerial photo because it is, this is not showing where it actually comes out to, about here. This building is larger in, in the existing condition now than what this is showing. But certainly, I mean, these, these buildings don't line up now, the three dealerships. So, the Mitsubishi and the proposed Kia will, will be closer to lining up building face-wise then.
Can I add anything? I just want to, I just want to speak to that question too.
Thank you.
Good evening for the record. My name's Chad Brandon. I'm a civil engineer with Fieldstone Land Consultants and, and a principal with the company. I think that one of the key components here, and John, Mr. Noonan actually touched on it earlier, is that the existing Kia dealership, currently the finished floor elevation of that dealership is, doesn't have the one foot of freeboard to the hundred-year floodplain elevation. And so, when our client looked at potentials for developing the site, initially, those discussions consisted of remodeling and, you know, options that tried to utilize the existing building. But early on in discussions with Mr. Hagan and, you know, the floodplain requirements and what those conditions would be for treating that building, unfortunately, that review ultimately led to, well, we have to build a new building detached so that we can adjust that finished floor elevation. And that's why, that's, that's the reason why this building is being positioned behind the existing building. It's in order for this investment and this improvement to happen, it has to happen while allowing an existing business to operate so that there can be some transition into, you know, the new building. So, it wasn't, I just wanted to get up because it wasn't their intent to put the building behind the existing building. It really was directed and driven by some of those existing constraints relative to the elevations in that hundred-year floodplain. But as Mr. Noonan said, there's, there's no true consistency and we technically meet all of the dimensional standards as it relates to building location, but we are obviously seeking some relief on the parking. So, I just wanted to just build upon some of that presentation. So, thank you very much for your time.
I just have a question because we walked it this morning, but there was some concern about the thirty-foot buffer. And I mean, I think you addressed it in the, in the, in the site plan as to what it'll be. But during, I was going to ask during construction, will it be disturbed at all?
Yes. So, there, there will be grading in this area. So, they're going to end up putting in the silt fence that's going to run basically following the buffer and then down on this, and it does cut into the buffer. Once they put that up, they'll, they'll end up putting construction fence because they don't want to, you know, ultimately be working within the buffer. But that, that will also be marked out. So, we're going to have to mark out and locate where that buffer is so that they don't continually impact it. They're just going to do the grading piece, loam and seed it, and we'll have that marked out in the field.
Thank you. Mr. Cost.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Somewhere I read, but I can't find it again, that, I think it's this project, that there'll be some pervious pavement? Can you just point out where that is?
Yes. So, in the rear of the building here, there's going to be porous asphalt. That was done for getting the total impervious area down. So, we, we squared it off. We didn't need this much to get below what was there, but we basically squared it off. And then we're utilizing that for roof runoff and allowing this stormwater to go into the porous asphalt. And then there's an underdrain that outlets and outlets to where the existing pipes all outlet in that tax ditch area to the north.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So, we have a letter that I assume you've probably received as well about the porous asphalt. And so, you'll, you'll address the, the kinds of concerns with staff of elevations and...
Sure. Yeah. So, that was, that was the letter that we received and we reviewed with the city engineer. And then we're going to be meeting with the alteration of terrain.
That's, that, I wanted to make the link. That's what that was connected with. Very good.
And, and again, good evening, Chad Brandon, Fieldstone Land Consultants. I just want to state for the record that the porous pavement meets and exceeds all the design requirements for the city standards. And ultimately, what that letter is trying to impose is state standards. We have a difference of opinion as to whether this project qualifies for an alteration of terrain permit. We invite dialogue with the Alteration of Terrain Bureau. We've reached out to them today and we plan on meeting with them. But the design of the porous pavement as depicted within our plan set meets standard engineering practices and guidelines. It does not meet alteration of terrain requirements as it relates to larger storm frequencies. But ultimately, any stormwater that goes into that area, as Mr. Noonan stated, there's an underdrain design that ties into the floodplain mitigation and ultimately into that tax ditch out in the back. And what's really important to stress here is this is an improvement project from a drainage standpoint. We're reducing impervious cover. We're providing additional stormwater mitigation. So, you know, the letter, you know, from our standpoint is somewhat unfortunate because we, we've worked with the Alteration of Terrain Bureau and their reviewers for well over twenty-five years. We encourage and engage dialogue all the time, and that's why we reached out to them today and, and asked the supervisors to meet with us to get some clarification on this. But certainly, if a state permit is required, this would, you know, designed just like any other project, would be updated for, you know, to their standards. And we would just ask and we hope that the board would consider, you know, any conditional approval to be subject to any state permits as applicable. And so, I hope that clarifies, you know, that, that topic. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Noonan. This time, I would invite staff to provide their comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is Megan Fortson, planner. So, just to provide a little bit of background information on the parcel, it's located to the south of the Route 101, Route 10 intersection and roundabout. The car dealerships to the north and south are owned by the same property owner and then located directly to the west across Winchester Street are a mix of residential and commercial uses on Wetmore Street and then Fairbank Street. The parcel is a total of 2.23 acres in size and has about 134 feet of frontage along Winchester Street. And access to the site is not actually on the subject parcel, but rather it's from the parcels to the south as could be seen in the construction phasing plan. As part of the proposal, the applicant is looking to demolish the existing 9,950-square-foot building and construct a new 15,365-foot building behind the existing building. Due to the fact that the entire site is located within the floodplain, the applicant is proposing to lower the grading of the site in the area where the existing building is located at the front and also at the rear of the site adjacent to the thirty-foot surface water buffer. The applicant has requested waivers from Article 20.14 of the LDC to allow for parking in front of the building and then from two sections of Article 21 related to the maximum allowed lighting levels at the property line, public right-of-way line, and then the average parking lot lighting levels. So, after reviewing the application, staff have made the preliminary evaluation that the proposed site plan does not appear to have the potential for, potential for regional impact, but the board will have to make a final determination. In regards to departmental, departmental comments, excuse me, code enforcement staff just wanted to reinforce the fact that building permit and floodplain development permit applications would need to be submitted for the proposed site redevelopment. And then in terms of zoning staff, they were interested in seeing a detailed maintenance plan for the porous pavement to ensure that that area of the site doesn't become impervious if not maintained properly. Additionally, the applicant, they wanted to make sure that the applicant was prepared to discuss the alternative interior parking lot landscaping design requirements for parking lots with fifty-plus parking spaces which are outlined under Article 9.4 of the land development code. Those were the comments that we received as part of the initial review of the application. Following staff's initial review of the application, we received the letter that you all have at your desks today related to the concerns about the stormwater design. And as Mr. Noonan noted, they did speak with city staff. Engineering staff did not initially provide any concerns about the proposed stormwater drainage, but did agree with what Mr. Thatcher, who wrote the letter, had said about the potential for the project to require an alteration of terrain permit. He does have some professional experience working with alteration of terrain permits, so his comments are technical. However, as was stated, the board's purview is not state-level drainage review and the city engineer felt that the application met the city's drainage standards. So, we have amended the recommended conditions subsequent to include the submittal of an alteration terrain permit if it's required. Now, to get more into the application analysis, in regards to drainage and stormwater management, the project narrative states that the applicant is proposing to use the existing drainage structures on the northern portion of the site that outlet into the existing drainage ditch near the rear of the site. Again, zoning staff had noted, or had requested rather, that the applicant submit a detailed maintenance plan for the area of porous pavement at the rear of the site. And the applicant has submitted an inspection and maintenance manual, which was included as an attachment to the staff report. The second page of that manual recommends that inspections be performed every couple of weeks after large storm events and within the first year following construction to ensure that the site and slope, slopes remain stabilized. Because of that, planning staff recommends that the board include a condition of approval that all inspection reports be submitted to the community development department for review and approval by the city engineer's office one year after the completion of construction. And additionally, staff also recommends that the board require the submittal of a security to cover the cost of performing all inspections during the first, course of this first year as a condition of approval. Another recommended condition of approval related to drainage includes the submittal of an annual maintenance report to the community development department and the submittal of an updated grading plan with a note added stating that an annual inspection and maintenance report for the porous pavement on the that an annual inspection and maintenance report for the porous pavement on the site has to be submitted to the Community Development Department. That first standard appears to be met. In regards to sediment and erosion control, the project narrative states that the proposed sediment and erosion control measures include the installation of silt fencing, catch basin silt socks and riprap rapids, all of which are shown on Sheet 4 of the plan set. The plan set does show the installation of a double row of silt fencing within the 30-foot surface water buffer at the rear of the site. The installation of erosion control measures within that surface water buffer would normally require the submittal of a surface water CUP. However, because this work is being done in conjunction with creating compensatory flood storage, it's allowed under Article 11 of the LDC, which is the Surface Water Protection Ordinance. To that note, staff do recommend that during the course of construction, that 30-foot buffer be flagged and inspected by community development staff just to ensure that the erosion control measures are gonna be adequate during the course of construction. And then we also recommend that they submit a security to cover the cost of that sediment and erosion control so that it's maintained throughout the course of construction. So that standard appears to be met. In regards to snow storage and removal, the proposed conditions plan shows a snow storage area near the northeastern corner of the parcel and states that snow will be, not gonna be stored within the wetlands or the surface water buffer and it will be hauled off the site if needed. So that standard appears to be met. In regards to landscaping, the landscaping plan is on Sheet 7 of the plan set and it shows the installation of a mix of rhododendron, winter berry and nanny berry vibrdum shrubs in the landscaping islands on the western portion of the site. Article 9.4 of the Land Development Code, as was mentioned, that outlines all of your landscaping requirements, both perimeter landscaping requirements for the areas adjacent to a public right-of-way as well as internal parking lot landscaping standards which are required for parking lots that have 50 or more parking spaces. In this case, the applicant is requesting an alternative, which is basically like a big asterisk that is granted to the planning board under this section of the zoning code and allows you to approve an alternative landscaping plan if you feel that the applicant has met the intent of those perimeter landscaping standards and the, the screening standards from the public right-of-way. So that's something that the board will wanna consider deliberating and discussing. And then, as per usual, we recommend that a security be submitted to cover the cost of landscaping and that the board also include a condition of approval related to the performance of an initial landscaping inspection once the plantings are first installed and another landscaping inspection after a year. Again, just more of a procedural type thing to include to keep the applicant on track with getting their security released. As Mr. Noonan had stated, in regards to screening, the project narrative states that mechanical equipment will be set back at least 10 feet from the edge of the roof and that the proposed building design incorporates a roof parapet that will range from eight inches tall in height at the front of the building to approximately 40 inches tall at the rear of the building, as shown on the submitted elevations. So that standard appears to be met. In regards to lighting, the proposed light fixtures all meet the color temperature requirements which require that all fixtures are full cutoff. They have a color temperature of 3,500 Kelvin or less and a coloring, color rendering index greater than 70. Note number six on the photometric plan says that the average illumination levels will not exceed an average of one foot candle between, between the hours of 10 and 6, so they comply with that standard. And then, again, they have requested two waivers related to lighting. One is related to the light trespass levels. Mr. Noonan mentioned you can only have a trespass level of .1 foot candle between properties. And then at the right-of-way line, you can have one foot candle. They're gonna be slightly above those levels in both locations. And then in the new parking lot display play, or spaces, excuse me, that are gonna be located basically where the existing building currently is, they're gonna be above the three and a half foot candle maximum that's allowed in that area. So that's the second waiver for lighting. The, under the lighting criteria or lighting section of the staff report, I do include the waiver criteria. I'm not gonna read that in its entirety, but you'll wanna make sure that those three standards are being met in deciding whether or not to grant all of the waivers. In regards to sewer and water, the city's GIS database shows that the site is currently served by City Water and Sewer Utilities and the project narrative states that the new building is gonna require extensions of these existing utility lines which will be coordinated during the demolition process of the existing building. So that standard appears to be met. In regards to traffic and access management, I think that Mr. Noonan spoke pretty well to the phasing of the project. And so staff would really just like to make sure that, again, a security is submitted to ensure that all of the temporary stabilized construction entrances are maintained throughout the course of construction. And then also given the fact that the sites to the north and the south, although they are currently owned by the same property owner, if either of those laws were to change ownership in the future, access easements and utility easements and other legal instruments may need to be in place. So staff would like to see draft language submitted that would be reviewed by the city attorney's office and see that included as a condition of approval. But in regards to traffic and access management, that standard appears to be met. Filling and excavation, again, it kind of goes back to the surface water buffer. The whole site is located within the floodplain. It's gonna be subject to a floodplain development permit, which will come through our office and be reviewed by our plans examiner. If it does require or meet the threshold for an alteration of terrain permit, which would mean that over 100,000 square feet of land was disturbed, then we've included a recommend, recommended condition of approval. It's not in the staff report, but it's in the updated motions that were given out today. Recommended motions, I should say, basically stating that if it does require an alteration of terrain permit after they meet with DES, we would like to see that, a copy of that. Surface waters and wetlands, not gonna rehash that, that all of the work that's being done within the buffer is allowed as part of the flood compensation storage work. In terms of hazardous and toxic materials, the project narrative states that items considered toxic, including oils, lubricants, brake fluid, et cetera, will be in store, stored inside the building and handled according to state regulations. So that standard appears to be met. Project narrative states that there's not gonna be any increase in the amount of noise generated on the site. So that standard appears to be met. And then in regards to the architecture and visual appearance, again, it's going to look, the proposed building is gonna look very similar to the GMC dealership to the north in terms of it being an aluminum finish paneling with more of a black and silver color scheme versus like black and white. So the board is gonna need to discuss whether or not you feel that that proposed design meets with your architecture and visual appearance standards. A waiver has been requested from this section of the code to allow for that extra parking in front of the building. So just make sure that you're discussing those waiver criteria and deciding whether or not to grant that waiver. I'll just run quickly through the recommended conditions of approval. For conditions precedent, we have owner's signature appears on the plan, submittal of five paper copies, submittal of a security for sediment and erosion control, landscaping, drainage inspections and as-built plans, the submittal of an updated grading plan with a note stating that annual inspections of the pervis, pervious pavement will be performed. And then the submittal of draft easement language and any other legal instruments required for this application that should be submitted to our office and reviewed by the city attorney's office.
Sorry to interrupt you, Meg. I just wanna note something for the suggested condition of approval C. And I missed this, the drainage inspections wouldn't be included in that. It would just be for the sediment and erosion control measures, landscaping and as-built plans. Just for the record.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, could you just, so delete the, the word drainage inspection from that?
Yes, under, under your regulations, we can require security for erosion and sediment control, landscaping and as-built plans. The drainage inspections isn't something that we would typically do or require an applicant to do. So I, it's probably something that should be done, but I don't think we can require security for it.
Okay, thanks.
So number one C, remove where it says drainage inspections. It'll just be sediment and erosion control measures, landscaping and as-built plans under that number. So just to quickly run through the recommended conditions subsequent, prior to the issuance of a building permit, we would like for them to schedule a pre-construction meeting with city staff and submit a construction phasing plan, which actually is probably no longer necessary given the fact that we do have a construction phasing plan. Prior to the commencement of site work, submittal of an approved floodplain development permit, flagging of the 30-foot surface water buffer and inspection of that buffer by planning staff. Prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy, the submittal of recorded easements and any other legal instruments. One year following the completion of construction, the submittal of copies of all drainage reports and inspection materials to our department, the performance of annual maintenance inspections and documentation, which should be submitted to the Community Development Department and then the initial landscaping inspection and the final landscaping inspection. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. I know that that's quite...
I just have one quick question on, on 2E.
Okay.
Should we be a little more specific about maintenance of inspection of what? We're talking about the pervious?
We could certainly add, yeah, you could say annual maintenance inspection shall be performed of pervious pavement at the rear of the site.
Cause that's what we're talking about, right?
Yeah, yep.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, sorry, one more thing. I apologize. Condition 2A says, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall schedule a pre-construction meeting. That should say, prior to the commencement of site work. I apologize for that.
Here, I can, Mr. Chair, would it be okay if I read the, the updated motion?
Yeah, just, just hold on a sec, let's clarify it. Counselor Remy.
The, thank you, sure, I think the easiest thing to do is strike 2A2 and move 2A1 to under 2B.
And then rename to?
And then rename to, and rename B, A and, you know, such and such. You're gonna have to do some phone numbering. If you want, I'll, you have good notes over there, so.
62.
62.
Yeah, 62 and 63.
Can I just one clarifying?
Yeah, please.
This is partly for staff, but it's also just, I'm curious if the petitioner had seen this draft motion before, including the requirements for submitting the maintenance annually and all that. If they'd seen it before and if they had raised any concerns with this.
So just to address, yeah, this is the motion in terms of the annual maintenance and that those recommended conditions of approval, yeah, they were included in the staff report that went out in the agenda packet. I'll defer to the applicant as to whether or not they have any concerns about that proposal.
Good evening again, Chad Brannan with Fieldstone Land Consultants. We don't have any, you know, any, any issues with submission of annual inspections and such, so, thank you.
Thanks. All right, so I don't know if we wanna do it now, or we have some wordsmithing to do on the, on the motion, on the proposed motion.
Mr. Chair?
Counselor Remy made a specific recommendation. I don't know if staff caught that and agreed with it or, okay.
I can repeat it if it's helpful. Yeah, I was just saying, strike 2A2 because that was already covered. 2A1 moves into 2B functionally. And then you renumber everything to make it make sense, which is, you guys both did the same thing.
Yeah.
Perfect. Does that?
This is A and then everything, and that's B, that becomes B and on down, right?
Yeah.
All right, so I was just trying to follow, but so 2A has nothing under it then?
It's gone. A becomes the next one down.
Okay.
And then you renumber down.
Mr. Chairman, I apologize for the interruption. Just for the record, I handed Counselor Remy a revised copy of the motion reflecting the, the changes as discussed just now.
Okay, thank you.
Which matches exactly what you just did.
Okay. So, yeah, the, the one I was talking about is now F or maybe it's back to E, I don't know, the annual maintenance?
The one called is depending on which version you're looking at, there was the addition of the Alteration of Terrain Permit request, which went in originally as C, but that became B as part of this proposal. So everything below that shifted down. So when you hear the numbers, for the rest of the committee, the language on that is submittal of an approved alteration of terrain permit from the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services if deemed necessary, is what was put in as the suggested language.
Good, good, thank you.
But 2E will remain the way that it was, just renumbered.
Yeah, yeah.
And with, with your addition of?
Correct, yeah.
Couple of words.
Yep. Okay, good. Any other questions for staff? Now that she's scooted away. Okay, all right. At this time, I'll invite public to make comments. Is anyone here, raise your hand if you would like to, if you're from the public and wanna make a comment? Okay, seeing, seeing none, we'll close the public portion. And now move to, segue right into a motion.
Just tuning up the language that was brought up about of pervious pavement in what was E is now F or vice versa.
Mr. Cost, you ready?
I'm ready and hopefully we captured all that, but Counselor Remy might keep me straight if not. I move to approve PB 2024-16 as shown on the plan set identified as site redevelopment plans, Fairfield Kia of Keene, prepared by Fieldstone Land Consultants, PLLC, at varying scales on October 18, 2024 and last revised on November 11, 2024 with the following conditions. One, prior to final approval and signature of the plans by the planning board chair, the following condition precedent shall be met. A, owner's signature appears, appears on the title page and proposed condition plan. B, submittal of five paper copies and a digital copy of the final plan set and elevations. C, submittal of a security to cover the cost of sediment and erosion control measures, landscaping and as-built plans in the form of, in the form and amount acceptable to the Community Development Director and Engineer. D, submittal of an updated grading plan with a note added stating that annual drainage inspection shall be performed and documentation of such shall be submitted to the Community Development Department. E, submittal of draft easement language and any other legal instruments required for this application to the Community Development Department for review by the city attorney's office. Two, subsequent to the final approval and signature of the plans, the following condition shall be met. A, schedule a pre-construction meeting with city staff to review the project. And, do I have that right? A, A1, A1 is schedule a pre-construction meeting with the city staff to review the project. A, Roman numeral 2, submit an approved floodplain development permit. And Roman numeral 3, flag the 30-inch surface water buffer and contact planning staff to inspect, to ensure compliance with the approved site plan and all City of Keen regulations. B, submittal of an approved alteration of terrain permit from the New Hampshire Department of Environmental Services if deemed necessary. C, prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the new building, the applicant shall submit recorded copies of all necessary... shall submit recorded copies of all necessary easements to the community development department. D, one year after the completion of construction, copies of all drainage reports and inspection material shall be submitted to the community development department. E, annual maintenance inspections of pervious pavement shall be performed and documentation of such shall be submitted to the community development department. F, after landscaping has been installed, the applicant shall schedule an initial landscaping inspection with the community development staff. And G, after one full growing season, a minimum of one year, community development staff shall be contacted to schedule a final landscaping inspection.
Second, with a couple caveats, just for the record, you, just reading off what two A is, it's prior to commencement of site work, the applicant shall, so one and two, one, two, and three read below that, so just for clarifying for the record, and I, I might have misheard you, but a 30-foot surface water buffer, just to make sure that that was clear, that, that we're done with 30 feet.
Thank you. Okay. Well, I think Counselor Remy is second.
Couple caveat, clarifications to make sure.
He's got you there. Okay, all right. Discussion, deliberation, comments? Mayor Khan?
Yeah, I'll be glad to jump off. The, first, I think it's good to see that the property owner, business owner, is interested in making this improvement. I think we can observe in our community, I can anyway, that this dealership, the Kia dealership, has been successful, and I judge that the business plan follows, the, this improvement is follows, following a business plan that has been executed fairly well. So, that to the good side. I think the landscaping exception is one that I think was addressed well enough by staff and by the presenters, so I don't see any problem with that element. The extra parking at the front of the building, I don't see a problem that's created with that, makes sense. I'll leave the lighting discussion to somebody else, the three-and-a-half-foot candle sounds pretty intense, so the other two numbers sound pretty minimal, but that one, somebody else can opine on, and I'll, I'll just, I'll just finish off here. And, and finally, the, the, relative to the pervious surface, I looked at that and saw, you know, annual inspections, and was imagining the file that was gonna be established in city hall, and, but, I've also been involved in the construction of pervious surfaces in the past. They don't hold up over time, and it's a recommendation that I think the property owner is going to benefit from those kind, he's gonna do it anyway, because it's just, and that, and that, we will all benefit from assuring ourselves that the design is, in fact, has integrity over time, so I, I, I think, I'm, I'm ready to vote in favor of the application, but I am interested in the staff and other comments on, on the lighting issue.
May I ask staff for clarification? We had three waivers requested. Do we need to table the motion and vote on the waivers, or are they included as part of it?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, this is Megan Fortson, planner. Yeah, I would recommend doing a separate vote for each of the three waiver requests, and then you can vote on the recommended conditional approval motion.
Okay, so we need to table?
Yeah, the.
Or, Mr. Chairman, could we, could we amend the motion with three amendments on it, including exception one, exception two, exception three?
It's okay with me, and staff seems to be nodding yes, so. So, let's, I, so please go ahead and move for.
I move amendment one, fill in the blank.
Okay. Is this, to this question?
I'm not sure.
All right, well, then hold off, then.
Well, I'd like to, the letter we have from us.
Yeah, let's hold off on that, please.
Okay, we'll have a chance to discuss it.
Yeah, yeah, we're still, still framing, we're still framing the, no, we're still framing the motion there.
Great.
Yep.
Should we do parking for, you want to vote on parking first? Is that what we?
Yeah.
Does that sound, we vote on the waiver for parking in front of the building first?
Sure.
Or are we doing it as part of it?
Why don't you make the amendment?
No idea how to do that. Wouldn't know how to word it, but I do understand that they're requesting a waiver for parking in front of the building, but I don't have the language, something in there. Parking is required per LDC is 22 spaces and 41, and they're looking for more than that, so we want to vote on that first.
Counselor Remy?
Move to grant the requested waiver from Article 20 dot 14 dot 3 dot D of the LDC to allow for parking in front of the new building.
Thank you. And a second?
I'd really like to second that.
Thank you.
Can I speak to it a little?
Yeah, please.
Thank you, I, I think it's fair, I think this is a unique business case, we talk about this, the intent of this language is really targeted to, you know, parking. This isn't parking, this is their showroom, right? So I, it's a little bit different. It also affects my opinion on the, the landscaping plan to lean into that one a little bit of, it's a unique place, right? We're not gonna tell somebody, plant trees over there, the clothes that they're trying to display to sell to people, because you don't want birds in them, you don't want leaves in them, things like that. It makes sense, this is the merchandise for it, it needs to be in front, it's, it's their display area, not really a parking area, so I think it is a unique exception for the business, and I think it would put in unnecessary hardship on them to have to hide their cars when the purpose of this is to sell cars. So I think in that landscaping piece, I think, yeah, I, I'm trying to remember which pieces are in which part, because I'm, there's three waivers, but it's only two topics, so I'm trying to remember which one is which, but for this piece, where we're talking about the, the landscaping, I think in this, in this one, and is this really the landscaping and parking?
Yeah, this is parking in front.
So, sorry, Mr. Chair, if I could jump in really quickly. The guidance that we've received, and, and, you know, take this with a grain of salt, it's just guidance from staff, is to have a separate vote on each waiver, just that it's really clear in the record, and so if you could do three separate amendments and do a separate vote for each waiver, I think that meets that intent.
Yep, that's, that's kind of what we're doing, yep.
Yeah, so I believe right now, it's the parking in front of the building.
Parking in front, correct.
So clarifying, my motion was actually a motion to amend to include a, a waiver. If a second is okay with my clarification? Are you okay with my clarification that it's amended?
I am okay with your clarification, thank you.
So speaking of specifically parking in front, to keep it separate, I, yeah, it's a car dealership, I think they need to.
Okay. Any other discussion of this amendment concerning the waiver of parking in front of the building? All right, let's proceed to a vote. All those in favor of including this amendment? Any opposed? All right, this amendment for the waiver of parking in front is now included in the motion. Okay. Next is basically a property line and right-of-way trespass waiver for the lighting.
Make sure I get the right one, because there's.
Yeah, there's two lighting ones.
Trying to find, there's no recommended motions in here, right? I'm making these up as I go. Oh, I was just making them up as I went. Okay. Okay, so move to amend the motion to include, or an approval of the waiver of section 21.7.3.3 C for lighting in the request to exceed the maximum foot candles at the property line and at the right-of-way.
Good. Second? Mayor Khan, thank you. Any discussion? Mr. Cost?
So, I'm not sure, well, I'll ask it here, and then, the idea of this, I'm assuming is for security, or, or what is the purpose that it has to be above what our, our standards are? What's driving it? Like, like we learnt that we don't want trees over cars because the trees will ruin the cars, so what is the driver for this? And is it, is it, that, is it critical?
Mr. Chair, may I answer that, or attempt to?
Yeah, please.
And, Ms. Fortson can jump in if. So for this site, one thing that's somewhat unique about it is it used to all be the properties to the, was it that north and south of it? Used to all be one site, and then it was subdivided in the eighties, and when it was subdivided, the property lines got drawn right down the middle of travel aisles. Those travel aisles are still there today and are proposed to be maintained, and so I think part of the request is because cars will literally be traveling down the property line, they, in order to keep the parking lot lighting safe and usable, it needs to cross the property line. I know the board has seen other instances in the past where there's properties where a parking lot kind of spans two different properties, and the same thing happened in those instances where the applicant had to request a waiver because of that. And then with the public right-of-way, and I'm not as familiar with this project, so I'll let Ms. Fortson jump in if I'm incorrect, but I believe because of where the, the travel easement is along the front of the property, the access for this property is actually from the property to the south, and so you have to cross another property to get to this, and so just because of where the pavement is and where the parking is in front, which is consistent with the two properties on either side of it, I believe that's why the lighting would cross onto the public right-of-way. And I see that Ms. Fortson is nodding her head, so hopefully I got that all correct.
Thank you. Ms. Vazano?
So we have, there was some information submitted by the applicant that does indicate that this is normal for a dealership, this type of lighting on 69 of the packet, page 69, so it does go into that, that this type of business has this type of light, level of lighting, and that it would benefit the abutters, who are the same owners, rather than affect the road, and would not have any adverse impact due to that, so just to share that information that I found deep in the package.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I think we're ready to vote on the, the waiver for the light trespass. So, all those in favor of including this waiver as an amendment to the, to the proposal motion? Any opposed? No, okay, so this amendment is now included in the proposal motion. So we have one more, if I'm not mistaken, and this is for the level of lighting.
I'll take a stab if you want.
Yes, please, yeah, here.
All right, move to amend the motion to include language granting the approval of a waiver request from 21.7.4.a.1, lighting parking lots related to exceeding 3.5-foot candles.
Second? Mr. Mayhew, thank you. I guess we have the same question, if staff knows an answer. Do we have the same question regarding the rationale for this, or it's just normal for a car dealer? Ms. Burner, do you know?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for this question, I would actually, perhaps you could open up the public hearing and ask the applicant.
Yeah, that'd be great.
I am not familiar with car dealership lighting levels, so.
Okay. Yeah, sure.
Before, before we do that, what would, what would, what is the standard? What are we, what are we exceeding?
Great question. So the planning board's lighting standards for parking lots specifically have standards related to the average illumination, that you can't exceed 3.5, I think it's 3.5-foot candles, and then we have what's called a uniformity ratio of five to one, so basically saying the ratio of the average to the minimum can't be greater than five to one, so really what the parking lot light level standards are trying to get at is not creating a situation where you have really bright spots and really dark spots. They want, the, the regulations are really geared towards creating a more uniform light level and trying to establish across the city, light levels that are consistent with each other, and dark skies compliant, so not, you know, causing glare and things like that. The standard, this specific standard is the 3.5 average level, so presumably they do meet the five-to-one uniformity ratio, just not the average.
So he'll address if it's going to exceed, so he'll address if it's going to exceed 3.5 in some spots and less than 3.5 in other spots.
Yeah, so the 3.5 is a maximum average, so, so, yeah, usually you have where the light fixture is located is gonna be the brightest spot, and then it kind of drops off from there, and then you have the overlapping from different lights, and so what they have to do is submit what's called a photometric plan that shows kind of on a grid what the different light levels are in foot candles, and so then they use a, a software to calculate the average, so basically all those little points are, you take an average of them, and that can exceed 3.5.
Got it.
Thank you.
I'm glad you're, you're reviewing that.
Counselor Remy, did you have a comment or question? Okay. Mr. Noonan?
Thank you. John Noonan, Fieldstone Land Consultants. Mary, you did a great job explaining that, so with the lighting plan, we provide photometrics, and then it has these outlines of what each fixture, so it's dependent on the type of fixture. These, the areas that we exceed the most are right out here where we have overlapping between pole-mounted lights, so there's three fixtures here, and they're, the ones that are on the right-of-way have a forward throw, so they're full cut off, but nothing shines back towards Winchester, Winchester Street, so you end up with more of a condensed amount of light, so right where our pylon sign is, so the site sign, and right in this front area, that would be your, your max where we're getting over in this front parking lot. And then the other area where we go over is basically customer parking and right up near the building, and it's just, it's the overlap in the middle, in the middle here where these lights overlap, and you get a more concentrated area, so in working with the, the corporate architect, they ask that we have higher levels as much as possible because they want security and then higher display lighting, and then we've noted that 50% of those lights would, would turn off after, after 10:00 PM.
All right, so the answer to the question of, of why it's.
Is, is to try to meet the dealership's request for, for higher lighting levels, yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'm just, I'm wondering if I'm reading the plan here correctly, never having reviewed the detailed photometric, so it's an 11.8-foot candles at the signage, essentially, in that area?
Right, this, this highest point right here is 11.8.
Yeah, okay.
And then the next highest is 6.4 up by the building right here where these two lights overlap.
So we're exceeding the standard of 3.5 up to, if we approve this, we, we're gonna allow up to 11.8.
Counselor Remy?
Yeah, it's an average.
Clarifying, it's an average.
Yeah, so then they, I mean, yeah, so the overall average is 7.8 in this, in this front area.
Okay.
The next area is 3.25, so we're, we're below that max average, and then our max average in the back is 1.65. These are smaller lights, and, and there's only two of the pole-mounted lights.
So just out of curiosity, what is the overall average?
So it's broken down into the front area, the display, so display spaces adjacent to the roadway is basically right in here, and then the customer parking and display at the front of the building, and then this rear parking lot, so it's taking each section, so breaking out each parking. So it's taking each section, so breaking out each parking lot area. So we have an average of 7.8 in the front, next to the roadway. The main parking lot display is 3.25 average, and the rear is 1.65, which is just the, basically the porous asphalt area.
Okay. So the overall is something like, close to four, maybe? If you combine all three lots?
If you did all three together.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Cost?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Maybe it's a question for Mary or the planners. So our standard would allow us to have a really, really bright light in the middle of a parking lot, like super bright, but over the average of, if all the other lights are low, that average would be 3.5, and that's okay.
Oh, there's a five to one.
Yeah.
There's the five to one.
Yeah.
Ratio between max and min. So in your scenario, we would probably likely exceed that five to one ratio.
Yep. So the, it's the two things in combination that kind of control the light levels. So there's the maximum average, which, and usually with a photometric plan, they will section out, like if there's a few different parking areas, they'll calculate it separately for each parking area. And so you, you calculate the average light levels, and then it's the ratio of the average to the minimum light level that gives you your uniform, your uniformity ratio. So those together are what kind of control the overall light levels. So yeah, if you have like a really, really, really bright light, it's going to be very hard to meet the rest of the standard.
I would just like to add, Mr. Chairman, so that, that 3.5 is supposed to be for the entire site. So if you do average all three of those areas that Mr. Noonan just discussed, the entire site average comes up to 4.2. So that, that 7.78 number sounds really like a lot. But when you look at the entire site, the amount of relief the applicant is looking for is to allow an average light level of 4.2 foot candles instead of the required 3.5.
Thank you for that. Mr. Cost?
Thank you. So at 10 o'clock, the lights go to 50%. Do these lights in the front go to 50% too?
Yeah, all lights, they'll, they'll go to 50%.
Okay, thank you.
Any more discussion or questions on this one? Okay. So we have a motion, and it's seconded, so, and this is for including, yeah, Counselor Remy?
Is the public, I think we're still in public, I think you need to close the public hearing again, just as a, or ask if there's anybody else that needs to, wants to talk before.
Anyone else want to, and the public want to weigh in on this? Okay. So I will close the public portion again. Thank you. Thank you for being my parliamentarian.
Yeah.
Mayor?
Would, so this fact that over different times of the day, and naturally, different seasons of the year, this is going to have a greater impact than other times. And at least the time of day, I guess what I want to get to is, should the motion reflect that they'll comply with the average foot candle from 10 o'clock on?
I guess my, my thought on that, Mr. Mayor, would be that if the, the reduced lighting plan is compliant with the reduced standards, that's sort of, it's already there, we've done it, right? They are, they are complying, the reduced lighting plan is complying with the requirements, and then it's just during their, that operational window that they're seeking the relief from it.
Right.
They didn't submit a reduced lighting plan?
It, it, I feel better, knowing that we are approving an exception within a particular hours of operation to assist with the operations of the business. But we're also taking into consideration the concerns of the neighborhoods, and that, yeah, I, I think we can do both in the same amendment.
Ms. Fortson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to clarify, so we do not have a reduced lighting plan that was submitted as part of the plan set, but there is a note on that plan saying that the lighting is going to be reduced by 50% between 10:00 P.M. and 6:00 A.M. So I don't know if that makes you feel any better. I mean, certainly if you'd like to include it in the motion. But if there ever were to be any concerns about the lighting levels from, you know, any of the residential properties across Winchester Street following the redevelopment of the site, we do have that to point to, to say that they need to comply with that standard. So just something to, to think about.
I guess I, the applicants are indicating that they would be amenable to that, and I guess I, that inclusion in the amendment.
Well, it's on the, it's on the plan, right? It's a note on the plan, and that's, that becomes a requirement for the applicant?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. We, it's a standard, so they would be held to it even if it weren't a note on the plan, but it is a note on the plan as well, which makes it even easier to, to point to. And, yeah, so it's, it's already covered, I guess, but if you, this discussion, you know, if you want to memorialize it in the motion, that's also fine. It's just another reminder, I guess, for the applicant that that's a requirement.
And I guess, Mr. Chairman, it's that the exception is for a specific time, we're granting an exception.
Mm-hmm.
And the exception isn't an exclusive. It's as the applicant has requested it.
So I, I think I understand what we're, we're trying to get to. So, so you're looking for, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the, the waiver for the increased light levels is only for during the daytime operation?
Till 10 o'clock.
Till 10 o'clock. And then, and then the as-articulated light level, or, and then the light levels that our regulations normally require shall be required during the overnight hours, which is that 50% reduction. So you're, okay, so you're looking for a clarification in the waiver language to note the, what is it? The 7:00 A.M. to 10:00 P.M.?
10:00 P.M. to 6:00 A.M. is the 50%.
Yeah, so, 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 yeah, so 7:00 A.M. to, 6:00 A.M. to 10:00 P.M., the waiver is for those light levels?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Okay.
Does that make sense, Mike?
Counselor Remy?
To avoid having a amendment of my amendment, I would consider it friendly to include from 6:00 A.M. till 10:00 P.M. because I think it functionally does the same thing because it would have been below anyway. But just to have it documented in doing it, if you're okay with, as my secondor, or you're my secondor, if you're okay modifying it to say from 6:00 A.M. to 10:00 P.M. at the tack end of the waiver?
Okay.
Cool.
Mr. Hafer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The other thing I'm used to seeing in amendment, or situations like this is also a max level. One thing to allow, or would we want to say, yes, we're okay with going above 3.5, but not to exceed 12? Or, you know, do we want to put some sort of a limit on, on what, what we're giving away in terms of our, the standard of 3.5?
So to set, to, so grant a waiver to allow for a light level of?
Up to X.
Maybe, let's say 4.5?
Yeah.
So my quick math was 4.22 repeating? So, so not to exceed 4.5 when normally 3.5 is allowed? At this point, that's a, that's a new motion, basically.
Counselor Remy?
Can I, I, I like where you're going, but I think the, I'm curious, they're held to the light plan that they submitted, which is that 4.2. So they wouldn't be allowed to exceed the light plan that they already submitted. So I don't want to trust, as much as I like the idea of the averages, which I did the same thing, I don't want to trust that each of those is exactly one-third, because I don't think they are. So I would rather, if, if you're okay with, like, they were going to be held to the light plan that they submitted.
Yeah, I think that's fair.
Thank you.
So no change to your amended amendment?
Unless someone wants to amend my amendment?
No.
All right. Last chance for a comment, or we're going to move to a vote here. All right, so now we'll move to vote for the waiver of the light, average light level foot candles, as articulated a number of times by Counselor Remy. All those in favor? Any opposed? Okay. So this amendment encompassing entailing the waiver is now included in the overall motion. Back to deliberation of the overall motion. I would like to hear some discussion of regional impact. Anyone care to weigh in? Counselor Remy?
I can do my swing through on stuff. So I don't think this is a, as much as it's close to a property line for the city relatively, I don't think there's regional impact from this particular development. It's not flowing into Swansea or across that town line, as much as it'll probably pull some business from there. I think it'll be, I don't think there's regional impact. The, we talked about the alternative landscaping plan and whether we were okay with that. I think I'm okay with not putting a bunch of trees in the middle of a dealership parking lot. That seems like an undue, unnecessary thing for them to have to put up with. So I think I'm personally okay with the landscaping plan as presented. We've already discussed the lighting, we've already discussed the, the other pieces. I think it's a good idea to clarify the, the easements, as much as that's, you know, we should put those on paper, so I think it's good that that language is included, and that we're addressing a lot of the concerns from the constituents that sent a letter about the alteration of terrain permits. Though this person may be someone who reviews alteration of terrain permits, so that was a little confusing for me, but I was, that, yeah, that piece, I'm glad they were addressing some of that by saying, if needed, that's covered. So that's my thoughts and feelings.
Great. That was a good summary. But anyone else want to weigh in on the alternate landscape plan? Okay. Then I also have the visual appearance, which is typically something that we have more of a subjective review of. So anyone like to weigh in on the visual appearance? Mr. Cost?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I mean, this is a, it's a, it's a commercial area with other car dealerships. I think a lot of our standards, when I, I think about them, are kind of relating to, you know, like, like as the mayor was saying, buildings with frontage that line up and creating streets and pedestrians and walking, and this just isn't that. So this is a pretty, you know, intense commercial area with lots of paving, and, and the building just seems like the rest of the building's there. So I, I think it fits into that environment well, and it'll, it'll be a nice building. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, the only other thing I had is this, you know, 100-pound gorilla, Mr. Thatcher's letter. And Counselor Remy said we did touch on most of these things. It's kind of hard to digest. I mean, I received it 10 minutes prior to the meeting, so. Mr. Hafer have some comments?
Sure. As a layperson, it just, yeah, it gives me pause to receive a four-page letter with such identified expertise. We, just curious on comments from city staff or yourself as chair, like, you know, as a, as a volunteer member of the board, how to, how to respond to something like this? Do we feel, it seems like a lot of it, we, if, if this alteration of terrain permits required, are most of this person's concerns addressed? Or are there concerns in this, in this letter that are, would not be addressed by that, by that process? I mean, if it's really just a matter of someone stating a opinion that an alteration of terrain permit is going to be required for this project, that's, that's easy for me to know that something else, some other process is going to take care of all these concerns. So I guess that's my question.
Ms. Vizano?
Let's clarify, I'm not actually dead, so my mic was. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do think that they mentioned earlier, and I was comfortable with the fact that we are going to be addressing that by putting that language in, that if so needed, it will be done. And so I think that does address almost every concern on this, except for that top one about the fuel storage tank. And that one, seeing that they're just picking it up and moving it, and they'll have to comply with regulations to do so, I'm comfortable moving forward in light of that, assuming it will be addressed based on the language we put in the motion already.
Counselor Remy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think, yeah, especially on the, the fuel stank, fuel tank piece, I'm sure D E S will have an opinion on moving a tank across property line, so that's something they'll have to deal with the state, but that's not something that I believe is within our purview. But I'm sure D E S will have a conversation with them about moving a fuel tank.
Yeah, I was, Mr. Cost?
Thank you. I, I, I thought earlier, I heard that the, this is being shared, or has been shared with the city engineer and other technical people, so I am expecting they're looking at this, at that level. And, you know, like you said, we were given this 10 minutes, it's pretty hard to digest what it is, so can't do much, I can't do much with this. So is that the case, that this is part of the package that is then being reviewed and will be incorporated at that level?
Ms. Fortson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So when city engineering staff, I'm, and again, Ms. Brenner and Mr. Clements may jump in with further clarification, but when city engineering staff, specifically the city engineer, are reviewing these planning board applications, they are reviewing them for compliance with the public infrastructure standards that are outlined under Article 23 of the Land Development Code, and for compliance with drainage and sediment and erosion control, those site development standards, they're not reviewing the proposal for compliance with alteration of terrain or any other D E S state-level permits that might be required. If that's necessary, that's at the state level that the applicant would be working with that separate department. That's not something that's under the purview of the planning board, that's not something that's under the purview of the city engineering staff. So the city engineer, when we spoke to him, did felt, did feel like this proposal met our local regulations and our local site development standards. He did think that it could potentially require this in the middle of an A O T permit, but he's not the authority to say yes or no, it does not require it. So if one is required, our office, state statute requires that we be included as part of that review process. So that's why we included the recommended conditions subsequent.
And, Mr. Chair, just really quickly to add to that, I just want to clarify that the, Mr. Thatcher, who wrote this letter, also met with the city engineer to go over his, his comments. So the city engineer had plenty of time to kind of digest all of these comments and go through it and understand them. They do mostly relate to the alteration of terrain permitting process. So if an alteration of terrain permit is required, that's when the site would have to kind of be re-looked at and redesigned to meet those requirements.
Thanks. Yeah, I was just trying to, as we were talking, trying to check off the ones that kind of were addressed by the proposal, but there's quite a few that are the alternate, I'm not sure how much the A O T, many of the separate items it covers, but probably quite a few. Mayor?
Yeah, and, thank you. That's, I guess, what I was curious of, that the alteration of terrain review would incorporate the number of comments that have to do with the parking surfaces. And that's what I took from your comments, but maybe you can, is it okay for him to inform us?
Yeah, please, yeah. Mr. Brennan?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Oh, there we go. Sorry. Again, Chad Brennan, civil engineer with Fieldstone Land Consultants. It is very uncommon to receive a review letter of that nature on a, at a local level. I've spent time personally over the last, you know, day speaking with the city engineer, you know, city staff to try to gain comfort and a path forward, frankly, with, with this project. I've also spent time speaking with commissioners at the state, speaking with alteration of terrain personnel that we've personally worked together with for well over 20 years. And this is unprecedented. It's unsolicited. And, you know, I believe in my experience, I, you know, have been an owner of Fieldstone Land Consultants for over 16 years. I've operated as a civil engineer in this state for well, for, for 25 years. We believe that, you know, this project does not trigger an alteration of terrain permit. But as I stated earlier, we do not shy away from a conversation. If it does require the permit, we will be happy to submit that with the application to the state. It is not our intention ever to avoid state permits. This is a pretty complicated site and I, I mean, I could touch on some of the things. We're under the 100,000 square foot threshold, period, no questions asked. There's a 10-year look back. The 10-year look back pertains to properties. We have separate properties. That breaks the 10-year look back. There is a redevelopment component. We don't believe it falls under the redevelopment component because the properties have never been permitted or developed together. There could very well be a difference of opinion at the state level. We just didn't feel like that was necessary to be debated this evening. Our office is five minutes from here. I really would have liked Mr. Thatcher to walk into our office and have a professional conversation with our engineering department so that we could have had this discussion, not before the board. And so I'm not here to cast, you know, or, or really replay this situation, but we are not taking it lightly. We believe the plan that we have designed meets all the city criteria. I think the city engineer has supported that. I spent some time talking with Mr. Ruoff earlier today about that to make sure that we could, you know, come here this evening and have, you know, a good dialogue and really represent our client. This project, the timing of this project is critical. If we don't receive approval of this project prior to the end of the year, they don't qualify for corporate funding. And so we will, we will thankfully, because of the way that things have been pulled together, much to, you know, some collaboration with staff and the city engineer and, and really working together, we have an opportunity, as long as the board, you know, obviously moves forward favorably this evening, to still address this alteration of terrain question in a professional and productive manner. And we will be doing that immediately, you know, in, in the very near future. And so I'm not here to discredit or, you know, disqualify, you know, a letter that's been presented by somebody other than the fact that we have some strong disagreements with, you know, that. And, you know, we look forward to having that dialogue. And I hope that is productive for this evening's meeting. But I, you know, just want to share that since it's being talked about, you know, openly now.
Okay, thanks. So hold on. Mayor Khan?
Yeah, I, I just want to make sure, and I think we've done that, that there's a path forward on addressing concerns that have been raised late in the process. It sounds like our staff and the client's engineering firm both agree that there is that pathway for a discussion of these items. And I'm satisfied that that can be addressed yet.
Thank you. Okay. Thanks, Mr. Brennan. I'll now close the public again.
Thank you.
And we'll return to our deliberation. Any further discussion? I went, I checked off everything that I had that we wanted to have a dialogue about. So at this time, I'm prepared to move forward with a vote. So all those in favor of the proposal motion? Any opposed? All right. Proposal is approved.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate your patience and your thoroughness. Okay. Let's move right along to next item on the agenda, which is an update on the master plan. Ms. Brenner?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There, I believe at the last planning board meeting, I gave a recap of the future summit that was held on October 5th. So I won't rehash that. There hasn't been a master plan steering committee meeting since then. The next meeting is going to be next week, Tuesday. And we have a couple of online discussion boards that have gone live, one on housing and one on the economy. And then there's going to be four more that will be launched soon. And so we're hoping to foster some great, you know, conversations on those discussion boards. We're hoping to get residents and folks who visit Keene, folks who live in, work in Keene but maybe don't live here, to contribute with ideas. And we're going to take those discussion boards and some of the discussions that are happening there and use them to help us come up with ideas that will then go into the implementation section of the master plan. We will be having some office hours at the public library on December 11th, 12th, and 13th for members of the public that are interested in just talking about the project one-on-one with a staff person. They could just swing by. We'll be by the main entrance of the library. And we'll also have a, a TV screen where we can bring up the online discussion boards. So if anybody can't use a computer at home or just wants to have some help using them, we can, we can help out with that. We are also, the task forces for each of the six pillars have been pretty much formed. And we're going to be doing an intro meeting. There's, it's going to be really brief and it'll be recorded. But then each of the task forces will be meeting three times throughout January through March of 2025. And the results from that, those task force meetings will be fed back to the master plan steering committee, again, for ideas for them to consider, to build into the final plan. So things are moving along. We will have a, I believe the date for the second future summit has been determined. I want to say it's June 3rd or June 4th. It's a, it's a Tuesday. The first Tuesday in June is when the, the next future summit will be happening. And that's going to be kind of like the big conclusion of the project before it starts the adoption process. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Any questions for Mary? Good. Next item is training, which I would recommend that we move to more time. Sorry, that's two months in a row, but we've had some busy meetings. So let's move on to staff updates.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the only update that I have for you this evening, well, actually, there's two. We have a new planning technician in our office. Her name is Emily Doucet and she started, what, two weeks ago? She's very, three weeks, wow, time is flying. So we have a, a new face in our office. So if you call, you might be getting some emails from her or if you swing by the fourth floor, definitely say hi. And the second update is, I believe we sent out an email about this, that Southwest Region Planning Commission is holding a roundtable for citizen planners. It's specifically geared towards planning board members. And I don't have any of the details offhand, but I believe an email went out about that, so.
Yeah, it's December 5th.
Okay, great. December 5th. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And that's it.
Thank you. New business? Any new business that board members would like to address? Good. Okay. So we move to the final item on the agenda, which is upcoming dates of interest. So joint committee of the planning board and PLD on December 9th at 6:30 PM in these chambers. Planning Board Steering Committee is December 3rd at 11:00 AM. Planning Board Site Visit will be December 11th, 8:00 AM, to be confirmed, depending on what applications we have. And then finally, the next meeting of this board is December 16th at 6:30 PM in these chambers. So with that, I will adjourn this meeting at 9:11 PM.